Well, this meeting of the Silver City Town Council back to order. This is a continuance after recess from Tuesday evening. And being as it's a continuance, I don't want to relive Tuesday evening. We'll be here all day. But I did ask the Chamber a question and they provided us an answer and I would like to give them an opportunity to present it or discuss it if they would like.
Good morning, Mayor, Town Councillors. How you all doing this morning? First, I'd like to thank you all for the extension that was given. And I think the question that the Town had was on this budget line item was for fulfillment project deliverables. It was for $19,382. And so, and I'd like to apologize, we didn't include backup in our proposal here. Anyway, what it is, is that this goes back to on fulfillment project deliverables is for our project reflection fulfillment and this is the budget that I handed out to each and every one of you. And it's basically for our website, which is a fulfillment clearinghouse, which what we're looking at doing is wanting to enhance it to do some other media things. We want to, you know, Facebook, Twitter, and do some management to this. And yeah, we're, on this here, we're absorbing 12,000 of what's been given to us as a proposal for doing this. And that's where we arrived to this $19,382. And I'd let you all review it first. I mean, we can go through this or you can just kind of review it and if you have any questions that you may have.
So, I have a question. You have professional web maintenance listed on your, on this budget you've provided for the $19,382, but you also have listed on the actual fulfillment project expenses a separate $1,320 that says website. So, how does it relate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. The charge in the proposal is for hosting and URL costs. The maintenance, the maintenance is for higher end website maintenance. We do maintenance, simple maintenance, but when we enhance our web, they'll be, we'll be adding video and that will be done by the web developer. We'll be adding collages to events and there'll be a higher skill set needed to do those enhancements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And do one more. Thank you. Um, so explain the logo development branding and graphics. Are you changing the Chamber's logo? Is this a different logo for, what is it for specifically?
That is something that we're going to, that funding source is for actually talking with the providers. We did get bids from three different providers and they're talking about static clean things, QR codes, you know, doing different things and that's still in the inception process. We don't think we're going to change our logo, but we're just going to make our website pop, create a greater sense of community, you know, add some special things like involve Western Mexico students, seniors, you know, we have, I should have added to the proposal and I really apologize. Am I allowed to read something that's not in the proposal?
You have a question.
Thank you, sir. So, some of the things that we're going to do when we're talking about branding and, let me see what I have on here, the logo development branding and graphics, we're going to do stuff about Silver City, visit Silver City, stop Silver City, living, family life, health and education, which is very different. Right now, we have 34 tabs. We're going to reduce it to make it simpler to go down to eight. We're going to involve students and seniors and kids and have family activities and contests on the web. So, that's all part of like sort of changing our brand and who we are. We want to have an e-club for specific groups like, like I was saying, for kids, seniors and tourists. And the whole idea is to attract more visits than we have to our website and more fun activities.
Okay, so more visits to the website, is that going to produce more visits to the Town and more heads and beds? I mean, because I just said more visits to the website and I want to know how that correlates to putting more heads and beds for, you know, that, I mean.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, we get about 4,000 emails from our website asking for information on how do we get to the, is the catwalk event, you know, what's going on with the cliff dwellings, information about restaurants and dining and everything and packets to come in and housing. I mean, we just get every kind of call we can imagine. And I do believe that will bring more visits to our town.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a mission?
Yeah, I suppose.
I think they're trying to.
Yeah. There we go.
The lodger's tax has a very specific purpose and some of the things that you've just mentioned are broader than the lodger's tax. Is this a shared budget or is this complete?
Can you elaborate on shared? What is?
We're not able to fund the business development and some of the things that you mentioned as you're changing your website to enhance the overall library's website.
Yes.
We can't fund that directly through lodger's tax.
Right. Yeah, this is here, I mean, it's not a complete for, you know, the Town's not paying 100%. We're actually absorbing some of the cost on this. Yeah, we got a $12,000 here that we're looking at. The Chamber is actually absorbing on this. And along with it, you know, I like to mention this professional video production, you know, this cost is very moderate for a professional video. And for us to place that of Silver City onto our website, you know, that we anticipate, this is just a minimum cost to the Town or to the budget as far as for the advisory tax that we're asking for. But a lot of that would be absorbed by the Chamber because we recognize that, you know, this isn't just all solely for the Town. There is some benefit to the Chamber as well.
Mr. Mayor, do we answer your question? We will be, the 12,000 will involve maintaining social media and other related activities that are strictly labor. And I'm not sure what is, what does not qualify under lodgers as far as web, as the website.
It's the other missions that the Chamber has for supporting business and industry in the community and the economic development issues that are, that are, we can't pay for out of this fund.
Right. Okay. I understand that. And we do have an obligation to our members as well, but we're trying to do a service to the whole community to.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm at, just a point of clarification, maybe it's the nine o'clock appointment. I can see that it says 12,000 that the Chamber pays and I can see that the total project estimate is the $19,382 that you have listed in your actual request that you've given to us originally. So, is the really total project estimate, the $19,382 plus the 12,000 that Chambers made? Because the way the budget's listed right now, I guess I don't understand the project sharing. That's my question. This doesn't clarify for me.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, on our application, we said that the cost of our event was $66,000 and the $19,000 is a budget line item. The 12,000 is taken out of the amount requested for 54. That's where the 12,000 is and I apologize, I left that out. I'm sorry to take that on the.
Yeah, we saw it on the first page.
The actual project reflection project and fulfillment and everything, all the activities that we do, costs us, actual cost, $66,000. And the $19,000 budget item is in there as well on the 66. So, we asked for 54, which is minus that 12,000.
Okay, so in in-kind services, you have listed website updates, social media at $10,400, not 12,000. I'm really, I'm sorry, I'm trying to clarify what you've, what you've provided to us. That's why I'm really a bit confused and trying to track this.
And where do we have that in your detailed project?
But unfortunately, the pages in most of the proposals are not numbered, so I can't tell you.
Tell us where you're at.
I'm on the.
That before the orange dot.
This is the page before the orange dot. Two, this, not the last page, but the page before that of the orange dot. So, it says, give a detailed budget for the, for the activity project with expenditures and anticipated revenues. It says, that's what the page inside. You see what I'm looking at? This is the page.
Okay, so the.
So, you've got in the in-kind services, you have website updates, the social media at $10,400 rather than 12,000. So, I'm confused that what we're, what's.
Okay, the $10,400 is actually what a staff person does for just maintaining the website and minimal social media. The 12,000 that's in the overall project is for actually bringing someone on to halftime because once we go live with Facebook and Twitter and start bringing on the Restaurant Association, Lodging, all the 54 Mexico chambers in that, in that arena, we feel it's going to take a half a year's salary to be able to maintain that, just to keep up with all the, all the stuff going on. We do get 12 million hits in a fiscal year, or visits on our website, and we do get 800, plus to 800,000 unique visits annually. And we do, I do get more than 1,000 emails a week from info and DVD content. And we just feel, I mean, we don't know, this is a work in progress, but we do feel it could take, you know, 1,040 hours to maintain that site annually.
Okay, I'm still not clear. The, you know, the two numbers don't relate for me because I don't see the 12,000 anywhere in what you've provided as a line item. And that's, I'm just, I'm just confused and I'm trying to understand.
I added it in the application that I gave this day as my first warning and asked for.
So, that would be added into the in-kind services or into the?
It's off the front page, Councilwoman. Where our application says total cost of events and get about.
So, the matching funds would be there. I guess I'm trying to figure out where would be in this budget that you provided.
Actually, I have, I have that, but I didn't have it in here.
Okay.
I didn't just, or I didn't show it down here.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Obviously, there was some reduced, it's not showing.
Yeah, it's just, unfortunately, it's confusing because I need to, I'm not as good as a numbers person as another.
Well, you know, like I'd mentioned before, this professional video, that's not a true number. That was just what we were sharing, you know, with what it would, you know, involved with some of the proposal we're asking for. But, you know, that number was higher and it was reduced, you know, and a lot of it was for that $12,000 that was reduced by that. So, we didn't show the total cost of the video production. We just put it in there. Right, yes. But, I like, they're good questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else?
Not unless you do. All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to read a few things that I think are important for everybody to understand and this is coming straight out of the code book. The purpose of lodger's tax, the purpose of this article is to impose a tax which will be borne by persons using commercial lodging accommodations which tax will provide revenues for the purpose of advertising, publicizing, and promoting tourist-related attractions, facilities, and events, and acquiring, establishing, and operating tourist-related facilities, attractions, or transportation systems as authorized in section 44-126. 44-126 says, "The governing body may use the proceeds from the tax to defray the cost of, one, collecting and otherwise administering the tax, including the performance of audits required by Lodger's Tax Act, New Mexico statutes annotated pursuant to guidelines issued by the Department of Finance Administration. Number two, establishing, operating, purchasing, constructing, otherwise acquiring, reconstructing, extending, improving, equipping, furnishing, or acquiring real property or any interest in real property for the site or grounds for tourist-related facilities, attractions, or transportation systems of the municipality, the county in which the municipality is located. Number three, the principal of an interest on any prior redemption premiums due in connection with any other charges pertaining to revenue bonds authorized by Intimacy 1978. Number four, advertising, publicizing, and promoting tourist-related attractions, facilities, and events of the municipality or county and tourist facilities or attractions within the area. Five, providing police and fire protection and sanitation services for tourist-related events, facilities, and attractions located in the municipality or, six, any combination of the foregoing purposes or transactions stated in this section, but for no other municipal purpose." And just, I want to reiterate after some of the communications that I've got, the awarding of this is just like awarding another contract for services or some other product that the Town feels that is important for the, for the operations of the Town. This is not an endorsement or insult on any of the organizations that apply on their foundation. It's people, organizations are asking to advertise and put heads and beds for the Town in accordance with the tax that is in our code. So, some of the emails that I've got are, and the comments we heard Tuesday were, it's personal, it's an attack on one organization or another. And it's not, we, people have asked us if they can provide a specific service to the Town. We have to look at the proposals that they present to us and how they want to do that. And that's how we make our decisions. It has nothing to do with, you know, I, I was on the Chamber Board. I went to the National Chamber site. I've looked at all the responsibilities of Chambers around the country. This has nothing to do with that. They have a mission that's separate from that. As does the Green Chamber and the car show, this perfect one, their mission is to put on a car show. They've asked us if it would be beneficial to the Town that we pay for some of the advertising to bring those people in for the car show. So, I just want to make that really clear. Secondly, there was some questions asked about the Advisory Board. And according to the code, the governing body shall administer the lodger's tax monies collected. That would be us up here. The Mayor shall appoint a five-member Advisory Board that consists of two members who are owners or operators of lodgings subject to occupancy tax within the municipality. Two members who are owners or operators of industries located within the municipality that primarily provide services or products to tourists, and one member who is resident of the municipality and represents the general public. The Board shall advise the governing body on the expenditure of funds authorized under section 44-126 for advertising, publicizing, and promoting tourist attractions and facilities in the municipality and its surrounding areas. So, if you notice, I didn't read anything about a term. So, there's, there is no term limits on the, on that Advisory Board. And I can tell you from the list of Advisory Boards that we have vacancies on and have had for, some for years. This would be a dangerous one to set up to start having a bunch of vacancies on and not be able to fill, as well as some of the others. So, I just wanted to make that very clear, that what we're actually doing here and what it, what it means. Next is, without reliving the other night, I know there was a couple of people at least that wanted to speak today and clarify some things. If, I'll open the floor to the members.
Mayor, Councillors, I'm Sissy McAndrew, Executive Director of the Green Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to clarify a couple of things and respond to some comments that were made last Tuesday evening. First of all, we opened up the Visitor Center August 1st and we, took us about three days to get a phone number. But we did get a phone number and I want to clarify what that is. It is 575-538-5555. It is answered live unless our volunteers are busy with tourists, in which case it is answered within three rings. It goes into a voicemail and they are all instructed on how to recapture that message and they do respond in person. So, one of our key concerns when we wrote our proposal last year was to provide personal service, not virtual service as much. We do that as well, but we do answer the phone, we do get back to people and so I'm questioning maybe that perhaps that individual had the wrong phone number. In addition to phone numbers, I want to mention that the 800 number was inactive from August until last month. And we were very, very concerned about that. We worked with the County to try to find a way to reactivate that phone number. We're very pleased that the Silver City, Grant County Chamber has reactivated that phone number. But a month ago, the County actually offered to pay the Silver City, Grant County Chamber of Commerce a monthly amount and then we would be utilizing that phone number and paying for the, the costs of that each month so that we could answer those calls. Also, I was the Chamber Director back in 2005 and we actually utilized lodger's taxes. We went out for an RFP. We awarded Karen Carr Studios and Ralph Gower to redevelop the website. And that website is what is being utilized right now by the Silver City, Grant County Chamber of Commerce. We understand how much traffic goes to that website and I really want to recognize that the Arts and Cultural District and the Green Chamber of Commerce, all the marketing we've been doing for Silver City this year and what the County has been doing is helping to drive people to that website. We're glad to see that the numbers are going up. But we also want to offer, and whether it's through a memorandum of understanding or whatever, if we are awarded the fulfillment funds for this year, we would like to have the Chamber transfer all of those leads over to us. And that will allow them to utilize their funds to meet their members' needs and their operating budget. We want to have a win-win-win situation. It's all about community, so let's work together and let's make this happen. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, last.
The question is the Chamber's website.
Oh, sorry. And I'm not sure who to, who can answer this. I'd like to know if the Chambers, the Historic Chambers website has a link to the Arts and Cultural website. To the tourism website that the Arts and Cultural District has up.
She's indicating yes.
Yes, yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. And we also have a video.
Lola, you have, we don't have the best sound system in here, so.
Yes, we are, yes, we are linked to the Arts and Cultural District, Main Street, regardless if their members are not. And we also have a video that's right on the front page and it talks everything about Silver City, whether they're a business owner or not. You can play that video. It's about three minutes and it starts off with our historic Main Street, our Arts and Cultural District accomplishments, downtown Miami District and that kind of thing. And I think that discussing how we handle our, our leads and our phone lines should be something maybe not at this meeting. I have made several phone calls for the record to try to work that out and we've not been able to do that, so no response.
Lola, how many days have you had difficult people through 800 line?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Oh, yes, there was an interruption in service with the grant number and I want to assure everybody that 800 service was working August, August through maybe 25 days ago and it was out of service 10 days. And I apologize, that was the billing oversight.
Dan Middle. Just give me a call. Good morning, Council and Mayor. My name is Sandra Hicks and I'm part of the Forces of Evil. I'm the Chairman.
You need to speak to us. We got to make decisions.
Okay, well, I also wanted to speak to the group that here, they feel that they're being somehow disenfranchised.
Well, you need, you need to address us on this issue.
Okay, I will. Okay, I'm sorry.
I think we've addressed the, the other issue.
Despite the fact that perhaps what I say will have no effect on the outcome, I felt the need to set some of the records straight. It's time, I think, for some straight talk. I'm an honest and forthright person and I'm very tired of hearing the half-truths and innuendos that have been heard in this discussion before the Council. I'm, I pride myself on having a committee that works hard to be fair and even-handed. We do not have private agendas or personal vendettas, but neither do we bow to sacred cows. First, because I am a member of the lodger's tax advisory board, people tell me things and usually I keep them simply as background information. But first of all, my first anecdotal info is that for several years, there's been a dissatisfaction and loss of confidence in the Chamber among the local merchants, particularly those whose businesses depend on tourism. They were concerned with the fact that the Visitor Center was not open on weekends, but the sometimes unfriendly service they and/or visitors received from the staff at the Visitor Center, as well as other things, the Chamber was seen as ineffectual and as promotional material for sale. Recently, and this is something that Sissy's referred to, but it's actually the Grant County Lodger's Tax Committee asked to take over the 800 number because it was disconnected. And they were concerned because much of their material has that 800 number on it. Also, a writer from Albuquerque who wanted to do a feature story on Silver City was unable to reach the Chamber on that 800 number for over a three-day span, as well as trying to reach the Executive Director over an additional four days. Luckily, he got connected somehow with a McCollum who then got him here and he enjoyed his visit, wrote a very nice article for Albuquerque IQ and intends to come back and write a longer article. One of the facts that I feel that keeps getting missed here is the fact that the Fourth of July Parade and golf park event are wonderful for the community. I think they're great. I love the parade. But do not forget that they are also fundraisers for the Chamber. They are not a charitable donation. I would be willing to wager also that many of the concerned supporters of the Chamber aren't aware of exactly what the Chamber's 2001 application for lodger's tax looks like. The Chamber's 2001 application for lodger's funding asked for $215,000. At that time, we had $225,000 to give away. All of that money was going to be paid to Santa Fe Marketing Firm to do the advertising and fulfillment. None of it was going to stay here. If the lodger's tax advisory board had awarded anywhere near to what that Chamber requested, it would have left pittancees for the Members Regional Arts Council, the Torre La Hila, Main Street, and other worthy organizations. And that's why they were awarded zero. This year's application asked for funding to cover the cost of the 800 number on the website. The Chamber chose to take those with them when they left the Visitor Center. And by the way, they were not evicted, they simply were, they moved. The Visitor Center offered to take them over, but the Chamber refused. And now they're concerned with what it is costing them. The Chamber is and always will be a members-only organization and it promises the members that they will promote only their businesses. This is advertised as a perk of membership. Therefore, I find it unbelievable that they claim to represent all of the Silver City and Grant County area and want tourism dollars to support their organization. Though they certainly don't want my advice, I and many others would say that they need to recognize that tourism promotion is being handled by a different organization now. But we certainly need a Chamber of Commerce to help grow our economy and serve as a voice for local businesses. I believe there's a lot of work they could be doing instead of fighting old battles. I believe, and this is the most important point I want to make, that our limited resources do not support two visitor centers. I ask the Town Council to make the hard decision and continue to move us forward on the path that was chosen last year, and not to be swayed by rhetoric, emotion, and large numbers of people. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I came here to share with you all what our organization can do for our community, and we do a lot for our community. I want to read our mission statement. The Silver City Grant County Chamber of Commerce is a nationally recognized organization, and our mission statement is to serve our members by promoting business, commerce, and tourism in Grant County. And I'm going to take the high road and not rebut all the comments, but I will say, Dave Haydig, who teamed with us on our proposal in 2011, not 2001, is President of the Tourism Association Mexico Board, and he was the most awesome resource for handling advertising, and we were the fulfillment house and teaming. And we did try to team with the Arts and Cultural District, and we tried to team with MRAC and Torre de Hila. And for the record, they would not team with us. So that's why we went to the TANEM Board President on that board for help to serve our community. I believe that there's a place for everybody in our community. I think the Arts and Cultural District do a lovely job on ad placement, the outdoor campaign. They've got the talent, the creativity. I believe the Southwest Chamber has a role here as well. They do a great job of staffing the Visitor Center, and they should continue to do that. But we do get the majority of the fulfillment-related inquiries and requests. And our website, yes, I think it was accepted in 1997, and we've got ownership of that website. I don't understand why people keep saying we take that with us. I mean, we paid for that. That might be something up for negotiation in the future. But we do serve our community, not just members. We've sent a national scholar by collecting sponsorships to Washington, D.C. We helped our community when there was a fire. I'm sorry that some people feel we don't deserve to be part of our community and supporting our community in this manner. I do think we have a viable proposal, and we have. Thank you.
Come on up. Let's remember, let's keep it to the proposals and what we're supporting. The rest of the organizational issues are not our concern to date.
I just wanted to thank you all for having this. I take just a minute. My name is Larry Flippo. In addressing the issue about large numbers of people, we do represent the community. A large number of people means there's concern. That should have a bearing in what you're doing. You're supposed to be representing us and working for us. So I would hope that you wouldn't disregard a show of interest. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Marler. I have only three things to add to what I said last night. I said only last night. One, I think it's really clear that the URLs and the 800 number were paid for by tourism money. They don't belong to the Chamber. Two, I can't remember what that one was, so I'll go to the third one. When I was a Chamber member, I wasn't treated with respect by my board. That's why I'm not a Chamber member now. Many of my friends who couldn't afford to be Chamber members took their money, took their brochures to the Information Center that was supposed to be the city's tourism center, and were told that they couldn't take their brochures there. They wouldn't be distributed there because they were not Chamber members. I believe that was a flagrant disregard for the fulfillment that they were being paid for. I have very little faith that there would be any change in that under the current management of this Chamber. Thank you.
Do you want to talk to me?
Uh, sure.
You want to wait? We've got somebody else.
I just want to say, as a business owner, my name is Rosanna Island, and what I want to say as a business owner, no matter what, there's two chambers, whatever, the thing about it is, is what's most important is that we get people here to Silver City. And, you know, that should be our goal as a team, no matter what. That's all that matters. Sorry. Sorry. I'm nervous, okay. Anyways, what I have to say is that, no matter what, there's two chambers here, you know, one has a website and a 800 number. But I think the main goal should be is to figure out how both of them can work together. I don't think any of them are going to go away. So why not, our goal be, both chambers be that we bring in people, no matter what. That should be the most important thing, I think, I mean, as a team. That's all.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark McDonald. I've been a citizen of Silver City. I've also been an employee of the town of Silver City for 22 years. My main concern is not all these side situations of whose little group is. I'm looking at the real world. I traveled after I left the city for seven years as an inspector around the country, and when I needed to find out information, I went to the Chamber of Commerce. I didn't go to this group, that group, or whatever. You go to the Chamber of Commerce. It seems like to me that we need to kind of stick to what everybody else in the United States is doing, and that is, if there is some work that needs to be done within the Chamber, then fine, or whatever, but as somebody who traveled around, just like anybody else, we talk about tourism there, they're coming here to Silver. Now, all of a sudden, they come here, they don't need to know about all this other, they need to know who to go to, and I would hope that they would go to the nice structure that was built, and to the Chamber of Commerce, and find out the information on the good places to stay, the good places to eat, and everything that is beautiful about my community, your community. And so I can't get into all the other problems that everybody seems to have. I'm looking at, though, the fact that everybody goes to any place, they go to Chamber of Commerce. So if we need to work on that end, then we need to work on it, but we don't need to get broken up on all this side stuff. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councilors. I want to go ahead and read a couple of items here to you that might be of some interest. This comes from the Silver City Grant County Chamber of Commerce bylaws. Article 6, Board of Directors. "The government of the Chamber, the establishment of policy, and the control of its property shall be vested in a Board of Directors, including officers and non-officers, to consist of not less than nine members of the Chamber, who shall be elected by the membership of the Chamber, and three members of the Chamber appointed to the Board for a one-year term by the incoming President with approval of the Board." That's Part A. Part C. "Seven members of the Board shall constitute a quorum for transaction to Chamber business." The fact of the matter is that currently, the Chamber of Commerce has a grand total of three Board members, not seven, not nine. Also, I think it's kind of interesting that one of the three Board members has absolutely no business experience that I'm aware of, and yet that person is apparently supposed to be an officer of an organization that is supposed to support the needs of business people. At this point, I've got to say that what we're talking about here is not a viable organization, even by their own rules. And I personally would suggest that the Council consider whether or not they wish to throw good money after bad on an organization that is in decline. Thank you.
My name is Bob Gager. I came here 20 years ago, Chamber of Commerce. Up until a few days ago, I thought there was one Chamber of Commerce for Silver City. Myself, I think they've done a good job. All of a sudden, I find out there's two. I would like to know, when it was deemed a necessity to have two things, two organizations doing the same thing for the same purpose, I don't understand it. And if somebody can understand me, where's this other, and I'm not knocking them, I don't know what they're doing. Where did they come from and why? And I thank you.
I'm going to address that, thank you, real quick. Rubish asked a similar question the other night as well. One is, the town doesn't deem that, and it has absolutely nothing to do with this proposal. This proposal is, we put out an RFP to the world, who wants to advertise tourism for this town and put heads in bits? So be people to best answer that question and what the missions of the different organizations are, and whether they have Chamber in their name or not, you may find other organizations that have similar overlapping overall missions that have totally different names. So I would hope that the organizations would respond, not in this forum, because it doesn't apply to our topic today. But I would suggest, from what we've been hearing, that there needs to be some marketing done. As far as the town is concerned, we have nothing to do with the Chambers, one way or the other. What we do have a concern with today is the Visitor Center and the marketing of the town.
Mr. Mayor, Town Councilors, we'd just like to address Mr. Hellman's remarks as far as Chamber, and I'll let Lola, she has some more specifics on that.
Since this is being televised and put in the media, we have changed our bylaws. And our bylaws read that we can have seven to nine members, and I do believe we have seven. And I'd like to name them Jim Nannick President, Trent Petty Vice President, Lori Benamos Secretary, Linda McGee Treasurer, and Melanie Reese. But we do follow our bylaws. I'd like that to be...
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we did change our bylaws, and I'd also like to just apologize to everyone up here for the behavior of our community. I think we need to move forward. We need to go ahead and get this behind us, and I think we all have a role in this community, and we're all doing a great job. Thank you.
I'll just editorialize a little bit. I mean, every year, we seem to go through this, and it's very painful for this Council, and it's really off-topic, but it's definitely an indication that we need some work, and we need some work in the community to come together and be more cohesive. And I have spoken to Alex about how we go about doing that. I have spoken with Sissy briefly about how we go about doing it. I've spoken with Jim and Lola about what our next steps are. And we plan on, before the end of the year, we've got a lot of work to do, and it's 100% accomplishable, and we have willing parties to do it. So with that, I'm going to make the recommendation to the Council for the funding. With the Silver City Grant County Chamber of Commerce, it's $15,760 for web maintenance, the phone mail, the bulk mailing, and they can negotiate the specifics of the budget that was presented today for the remaining funds. The Silver City Farmers Market, $1,000 for their proposal. The Red Paint Tribal Council, $2,500 for their proposal. Southwest Women's Private Arts Council is $300 for festival. The Hila Conservation Coalition, $1,000 for their proposal. Forbear Historic Preservation Society, $1,200 for their proposal. Copper Country Cruisers, $1,000 for their proposal. Members Regional Arts Council, $30,600 for their proposal. Main Street Project, $20,700, and not to include a morning show. Send a Sente Artist, $3,200. Grant County Rolling Stone Jim and Mineral Society, $2,500 for their proposal. Send a Sente Artist was also for their proposal. Silver City Gallery Association, $3,500 for their proposal. Torre de Hila, $42,250 for their proposal. And Silver City Arts and Cultural District, $100,000 for their proposal. Council?
Yeah. Does that end up correct?
That's per...
No, because I have a different number.
That's right off the sheet that I did the other night. It adds up.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Councilor.
I move to, let me make sure I've got one. To approve the request for proposal number 11/12 dash 3P, community promotions, per the list and recommendations that you've just read it, with all that pertinent information as to how the money, the funding should be used.
Is there a second? Is there a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll send you that motion, please.
There's a motion, a second, to award RFP 11/12 dash 3P for the list and qualifications that I presented them. Is there any discussion by the Council, Councilor, by the way?
Mr. Mayor, it's just for us, this is really a difficult time. It's one of those times when I question whether, it's really hard to be on the Council, every year when this comes around. Because emotions run high, and what we've tried to do in the last several years is to have the emotions go away. This is a contract. These are people asking for money, as the mayor has stated, to advertise the town. These are organizations and entities. It's not an endorsement. It's not about Chambers. It's not about organizations. It's about the biggest thing for the town's dollars, your dollars. It's about getting people here to spend money, to stay in hotels, to spend their dollars. Because they are the Lodger Tax Advisory Board and the Council. We've read them. We know what's been requested. I understand that you all want us to do certain things, but we are talking about advertising dollars, promotional dollars. So I beg of you to please work together. It's in our best interest that we do what's best for our town and that we use your dollars wisely. There's something that Mary Ann Marler said last Tuesday night that resonated deeply with me, and I want to repeat what she said, and I have to go back and find it because I had highlighted it in my thinking other notes today. She said, "Tourism and advertising in Silver City doesn't belong to any entity or organization. It belongs to the city." So please remember that. Let's work together. Let's, when the town brings people together, the Chamber of Commerce, the Green Chamber, the Arts and Cultural District, all of the other entities, to make this happen, so we can work together and move forward, let's do it in a sense of unity. And sorry to get on my soapbox, but it's just...
And, sorry to get on my soapbox, but it's just, this is really, it's, it really is. It's something that I question every year, why I do this. Because while I'm elected by my district, I work for all of you. And I work very hard, and I read everything, and I do listen to everything you say, but we have to remember that it's based on these competitive sealed proposals, and the answers to the questions that we have posed. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Counselor Besse?
Mr. Mayor, town. You know, simply speaking, as the mayor alluded to earlier, what this RFP is, is we need services, that the town needs services to advertise our town, and we need to find out what we actually need, and we need to pay for that service. Incidentally, one of the major factors that is very important to bringing people into this town is the website, is the phone number. We need to make sure that that stuff is coming in, and people are getting that information, and it's helping people come into this town. So we do need to see that that part of the service of bringing people here is still being maintained. I really appreciate the work of the advisory council, and I do take strongly their advice, and I do, and just kind of going over these numbers that was proposed by the mayor and motioned by Counsel Besse, it materially skips to that advice, and I hope that the advisory board realizes that we need to pay for the website, we need to pay for the number, we need to make sure services are continued, and that we're not also slapping the advisory board in any way. That we do appreciate them, and we're trying to do something that's not materially changing theirs. But the chamber is doing a very valuable service, and they need some funds to continue to do so. So I feel good about, as I go down this list, I feel pretty good about what the mayor proposed.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to award RFP 11 slash 12 dash 3P for the list that I presented it earlier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.